Welcome to the March 8, 2017 Skyrose Housing Board of Appeals. Could we have a roll call please?
Ms. Shoup?
Here.
Mr. Blaze?
Here.
Mr. Hebert?
Here.
Mr. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Stark?
Here.
And Mr. Richard.
Ms. Shoup, you've got to be voting tonight on official capacity. Do I have a motion on the minutes from February 8, 2017?
Motion to a previous president.
We have second one down here.
Good seconding.
Second. Shall we do the pledge of allegiance?
Getting there. We'll see now.
Wait until you take a vote.
Yeah, I know we have all the favorite. That's going to keep me confused.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought you were having a heart attack. Okay, so let's jump right into the appeals. Appeal number 2598, this is an appeal that has come back to us. It's a practical difficulty request by Kenneth and Heidi Foreman Smith on 69th Street, Assistant Map U-23 Parcel 63. Could you give us an overview of what took place and why we're here?
Sure, this is a practical difficulty request by Kenneth and Heidi and it was basically to replace, remove and replace a shed on their property. In the previous board meeting, the board wasn't satisfied that all locational options had been explored, fully explored, and mainly the concern was, as I understood it, that they wanted to make sure that the building was so fully onto the property that rainwater and whatnot wouldn't be shedded onto adjoining abutting properties. And so they really wanted the applicants to come back with some better explanation for why there was no other location or if there was another location where the shed could be placed. And so that's why it was tabled and it's back before you tonight to hopefully address those questions.
We've also got the minutes in the packet, so if anybody hasn't had a chance to read that. Okay, do I have a representative?
Yes.
If you could do me a favor, just state your name, address, and we'll go from there.
Okay, my name is Ken Smith and this is my wife Heidi Foreman Smith and we own the property on 69th Street in Scarborough.
Good to see you back again.
Thank you.
So if you'd like to give us an overview of what you've been trying to accomplish and then we'll look at some of the paperwork that you've provided and we'll go from there, okay?
Yes, absolutely, thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to come back. So Heidi and I had a chance to speak with Brian about the application and we talked about some potential options and really, I think, what we were lacking, I guess, in terms of our last presentation to the board. And what we really wanted to try to do with this new plan is to try to improve on the setbacks. What we found out was, when we had the survey done, that our overhang on the roof on the left-hand side of the shed was technically trespassing on our neighbor's property because there was only, I think, a few inches on the left-hand side.
When did you do that survey?
When?
Yes.
You turn it on the bottom.
Was it that original, can you hear me okay? Is this working? Yeah, so October-ish.
Probably prior to the last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's one of these American.
Yeah, so I mean, just to review, the shed really needs, we feel, to be replaced. Repairing it in place is a very challenging proposition because the right, the left side is settling left to the right and in order to put a foundation under it, it would require lifting the shed or lifting it in place, which would require us to encroach on our neighbor's property in order to do so, because the shed is at the abutters property line. So we had discussed that last time, that it was a very challenging approach to try to repair in place and that's the reason that we sought to do an appeal and try to replace it instead, which would result in a much better product. we included two options of the new shed, and if you'll recall, the new shed that we originally saw it was three feet shorter than the previous shed, or the existing shed, I should say. And we looked at pushing the structure about a foot to the left, which we feel will, or to the right, I'm sorry, which we feel will improve on the setbacks. This would result in the rear side of a 12-inch setback on the new overhang of the roof and actually a 16-inch setback on the wall, if you will, from the property line. And on the front of the left side, where it's a little closer, it results in a 13.2-inch setback from the property line to the wall, but when you take into account a four-inch overhang, that still gives us a 9.2-inch setback from the overhang. And we'd also considered some of the concerns expressed by the board about water running off the shed into the neighbor's property. This would, you know, drip into our property, but we even made the consideration or offer to lay a strip of crushed gravel and riprap to kind of minimize, if you will, splattering onto the neighbor's property, which, you know, currently is over and into the neighbor's property. So this is an improvement of a foot on the left-hand setback. It removes any trespassing issues that came about from the last meeting. We'd also looked at potentially pushing the shed a foot from the rear setback, where we currently have a minimum setback on the rear of six inches and slightly larger on the right-hand side of the backside of the shed. But by doing so, after we had made all of the measurements in terms, the challenges we face is that the shed and the side of the shed are close to the stairs of the exit and then also the corner of the house. And if we push this any more than six inches, it becomes problematic in terms of the space between the stairs and the new resulting structure. So by pushing it six inches forward, we ran into that problem, but what we proposed is actually reducing this right-hand overhang by six inches, which gives us more space in there as well to kind of accommodate that issue here. We really don't have a lot of options in this very, very small backyard and lot and we explored a lot of different ones and went back to the property and measured out a lot of different possibilities and trying to find a solution that would give us the storage that we want and really not encroach on the neighbor's property or create problems in terms of passage through here. So the proposal is, based upon all the information we provided, the proposal is to slide the shed, the shed a foot to the right, six inches forward, and then from the plan we had, reduce the overhang by six inches to allow us sufficient room to walk between the stairs and the right-hand overhang.
Is that Plan One?
Yes. Plan One, we feel, is the best solution and I think it improves on the setbacks. It reduces concerns about, you know, water dripping on the neighbor's lands or property or anything like that.
You do have two other plans though, correct?
I'm sorry?
You do have two other alternative plans?
We do.
Okay, are you presenting those tonight as well?
We were told to present the plan that we preferred, but I'm happy to if you'd like.
I just noticed in the staff comments, there was three different ones, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yes, so Number One is the one that we prefer, based upon all the factors that I mentioned earlier.
Okay, thank you very much. Board member questions?
I think he's done exactly what we asked him to do. We asked him to place the shed so it's totally on the property and no water is flowing onto anybody else's property and he's got enough room to move it around. If that's the one that he likes, as far as I'm concerned, I'm okay with that.
Just one second.
No, just to clarify, when I talked to the applicants, I suggested that they explore several different options and sort of show the board that they have explored options and why those other options didn't work and that's why there's three plans in there. They wanted to demonstrate that they had looked at a couple of different, three different configurations and then selected the one that they felt gave them the best chances of locating the shed on the property in a way that would work for them. So that's why there's the three. It's not necessarily, originally they were going to kind of let you guys choose?
Do that.
And I explained that that can't, that can't, that can't work that way, so they selected the one that they felt was the best of the three.
I've just got a couple of questions. I agree with you that I think that they've done exactly what we requested them doing. And to begin with you, just the distances that I'm seeing from an ADA point of view, 30 inches and 27 inches, that's tight, whereas 37 and 40 are reasonable. I do have two questions. Do you have any intention of connecting the two and making it into a, you know, a living area?
No, no, this is-
So you're not going to be doing any of that, not putting a roof over or anything?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Definitely not.
Other board members have questions? Those are my only two that satisfy my concern. Do I have a motion? Oh, we should go through, sorry. Sometimes when they're this clean, it's a little easy to tell.
Well, we went through them last time. Do we have to go through them again?
I think we should, I think we should just quickly, I'm not going to go through a lot of it, but we'll just go brush through it rapidly and, because you're right, we did go through, but we did have some people object on specific items. I want them the opportunity to either, they may still object. So we'll start off with, and you just want to rewrite what you put in there on the record, I think it's the same thing. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood, if you just want to state that.
Sure. The building position predates the setback requirements for the town. The lot is too small to conform to 15-foot setbacks. We will increase setbacks from current and build new structure with no overhang on neighbor's property.
Okay, discussion on Number One. I find that they've done the best job they can do in the circumstances, so I'm very comfortable with it. All in favor of Number One being met? That's unanimous. Okay, Number Two. The granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an reasonably detrimental effect on either the use of a fair market value of abutting properties.
Replacing a settling, rotting building with the new similar structure can only enhance the area. Moving the overhang off of a neighboring property will eliminate future title issues.
Anybody with any questions on that? I'll come back with just a formal statement, if you want to add to it, feel free. I think it accomplishes two things, that it does get it on the property that it belongs on and eliminates a potential problem down the road and also any problems with future neighbors or whatever. And it's going to help the market values because it's going to be new, it's going to look good, and I like the idea of the rocks and it's great idea. So all in favor of Two being met? That's unanimous. Number Three.
Practical, did you mention one? No, I was just going to mention that they've also reduced the footprint of the existing structure with the one that they proposed and that-
Could you put that on the record too, please? Thank you. The practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or the prior owner.
This building and many in the Pine Porn area were built before current setback requirements.
And I think that's pretty straightforward. Any discussion on Number Three? Seeing none in favor of Number Three? That's unanimous. Number Four. Any other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except the variance?
There is no other feasible alternative as the lot size is so small, repairing and replacing in place would require work crews and equipment on abutters property for unacceptable periods of time. Attached structural engineer report supports requested variance as the best option due to previously mentioned challenges. Because current building overhang, overhangs the neighboring property line, the building will need to be moved.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Normally I wouldn't agree, but I think we've addressed that and a few different issues.
Yeah, the, my opinion on that is Number One, the proposals, you have, the shed is there, so you have the right to the shed. You're putting it in line, you've reduced the size, you've moved it over as far as reasonable, you've showed us two other plans that, in my opinion, from an ADA point of view, aren't acceptable, even from a safety point of view, for that matter, if it's determined he had to get in there with a gurney or whatever, too narrow in some cases. So I feel that you've done the best you can, the variance is the only, the variance is the only way you can accomplish this, based on regulations from the state, so I have no problem with voting yes on this. All in favor? That's unanimous. Number Five. The variance will bring, will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties.
Yes, it'll be aesthetically more attractive and in conformance with current building codes. It will be totally situated on our own property.
Any discussions on that? Comments on that? Okay, I was just getting on the record, the fact is that it brings it into conformance with the current standards, which is not on somebody else's property. So yeah, that's about as conformant now as you can get. If you get it off somebody else's property, it's going to make it new and so I believe that it does bring it in more, more nearly into conformance, even if it is six inches, but it's still better. Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Number Six. The granting of variance will not have an unusual, if it has this effect on the natural environment.
No, this will not adversely affect the natural environment. In fact, we want to make the building smaller than the current one. We will also disconnect and remove the oil heating lines that currently run from the main house to the bunkhouse slash shed for the furnace that is in the shed.
Any discussion on this?
It might not even be part of this. Did you say that you're willing to put like some crushed rock down or something like that to, for water?
On the side?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, if you could do that, that would be great, because then we're really getting it away from doing anything to any neighbor's property or anything.
Yes.
Any other comments on that? I think that getting, anytime we can get oil lines, I had an oil spill in my house. I had no idea the damage that oil does until you've had an oil spill at your house and it doesn't take very much. So getting it off the, getting it out from under where it could break, crack, whatever, is always a good thing in my opinion, so that's good. And I do like the fact that they're doing the ground rock, so I'm in favor of this. All in favor of Number Six? That is unanimous. Number Seven. The property is not located in a hole or impound in the shoreline zone, if that's the case, because you wouldn't be here otherwise, so that's okay. Anything else we need to do on this? So we voted on each other's separate items, so I have a motion for approval.
Moved to approve, appeal number 2598.
Got it. Any discussion on it, or motion? Just one, I know you went through a lot last time you came here and it was frustrating. You did a great job and I know that a lot of the things we do happen because of other reasons that you may not be aware of and our goal is to be as consistent and as fair with everybody as we possibly can. I think you did that with grace and I thank you for doing that.
Thanks.
So with that statement, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Just to remind the applicants, don't forget to record your variance within 90 days. So like the first thing you should do this week or next is go down and record that variance at the Cumberland County Registry. Yeah, as soon as you get the actual decision. Can't do it when you don't have it, right?
Thank you. Okay. Good to see you. Use one of those little helicopter things to thank you?
You got a drone.
No, you didn't really.
No.
Now you're just showing off, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, you introduce yourself and the relationship with the project and we'll go from there, Jim.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, my name is Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions. I'm here this evening to represent Joshua Bernstein and his family, requesting a practical difficulty variance to be able to reconstruct a deck that is, was on a house, the house that was built about 130 years ago. What I'd like to do is just take you through a couple of the brief things. Mr. Bernstein is actually at home this evening with, taking care of his children while his wife is working, so he was not able to join us. But toward this end, what we have is a house that is, again, about 130 years old. It was in the Bernstein family belonging to Mr. and Mrs. Bernstein's grandparents from back in the 50s. They ended up giving it or selling it to Mr. Bernstein and his wife about seven years ago. In conjunction with that, in acquiring the house, the grandparents, prior to that point, there was a deck on the back of the house. And I'd like to call your attention to a photograph that's toward the back of your packet. It shows the rear of the house with the deck plate and actually with the sonotubes that are covered and have been for the past quite a number of years with buckets to be able to preserve their integrity that supported the deck that had been on the house. When Mr. Bernstein's grandparents owned the house, they didn't really, as they were getting more and more elderly, they didn't really need the deck and subsequently they didn't put any money into it and it got to the point where it degraded and then from a safety issue, they ended up having it taken down. But as you can see, again, the deck plate is still there and the supports are still there. When Joshua and his family did take it over about seven years ago, they weren't able to rebuild it at the time or come at the time, but they are now financially well off enough to be able to want to put the deck there, support their young family, just to be able to go out and use it as, we would all use our decks. In this case, however, because the house was, or is as old as it was, and you'll see by the plan that's at the very back of your parcel, of your packet, that the house is closer to Scottow Hill Road than it is to Two Rod Road. The address and the orientation of the house are Two Rod Road. It just happens to have two fronts in this case, so the setbacks are also two fronts. The overall parcel is about three and a half acres and you can see where the house sits up in this kind of front left corner of Two Rod Road that way. The point being is that, again, the house is over 130 years old and zoning came by considerably after the fact. They would simply like to be able to just rebuild the deck on the support columns that are there, attach it to the deck plate that has been there for quite a long time. They can't really move the deck if they were to use it, want to use it, obviously, over to, within the building envelope, because the kitchen is in that area and you can see where the propane tank is located that goes into, or the natural gas tank that goes into the kitchen area. So the entire house would, or the entire lower section of the house would have to be actually completely remodeled just to be able to put a door onto a deck that would actually then extend over toward the garage. It just isn't quite practical that way. Along with the triple doors that you see there, two of them would open up onto the deck, they simply want to be able to take advantage- feasible alternative for them to be able to put a deck anywhere else on the house. So again, it's just kind of zoning has caught up with the actual structure, and toward this end, we'd just like a, a small variance to be able to rebuild it in place. Toward that end, I'd be happy to address any questions or comments that you have.
Thank you.
It's pretty, pretty much cut and dry. The only comment I would make is, it must have been a long time ago that that deck was on the house, because I went back to, I think it was two thousand and three, with the Google Earth historical photos, and I couldn't find it on the house anyway.
It was almost twenty-five years ago when that came down.
I call it, you know. The town.
Twenty-five years ago that it was taken off?
About that. The grandparents were deceased. Joshua doesn't know exactly when it was. He was pretty small at the time, and he just, he remembers it being out there, but he doesn't know exactly when it came off.
Was it taken off, or did it fall off?
It was kind of a combination of both. It got to the point where the grandparents were elderly, to the point where they just didn't use it anymore, and they kind of fell into disrepair. And when it started to really fall apart, then they had it taken down, rather than replacing it. And then they continued to live in the house for a while, and then back in, in two thousand and ten is when they ended up transferring title to their grandson.
What was the size of the original deck?
Sixteen, I think it was sixteen by twenty.
Same. What is it, sixteen by twenty, or?
I believe it's about sixteen by twenty.
And are those, are those the original footings there?
I don't know. They're pretty old. You can lift the buckets off, and you can take a look at them. They may need a little bit of work to be able to.
They weren't, something was done in the last two or three years, five years.
Oh, no. These were, those were the supports that were on the deck. I don't know if they were the original supports. I don't know when the deck was actually built. I don't think there was a deck there in the eighteen hundreds when the house was built, but at some point, it was put on afterwards. And we did caution them that they may want to take a look at the integrity of the support systems.
Appreciate all of that. Thanks.
If it gets for, just for the sake of, of just making it crystal clear, the proposed deck is not going to be larger than the previous deck of the house?
I don't actually know the answer to that. I mean, the sixteen by twenty is what they're looking for. And you can, well, you can see by the photos that what they're planning to put there now would just encompass the support systems.
Sure.
So it's not likely that it's going to be any larger.
It's unlikely. I mean, utilizing the, the existing supports.
Exactly. They just want to build it the way he believes it was.
Great.
And which is about the sixteen by twenty.
I've, I've got to be honest, I, it's a four point five acre lot. Scottow Hill Road back then probably was only one rod wide. And it literally, as you pointed out, time has just kind of caught up. I don't see how this interferes with anything. So I have absolutely no problem with replacing that deck. I just don't, I don't think there's a negative that I can think of. I mean, do the same thing with a patio, and not need to come to us. So what's the difference? So that's kind of my position on it. I do need to go through everything else, obviously, but I, I don't want to belabor it if everybody's set in the same place. If others aren't, it's fine.
Well, I would just extend on Mr. Heber's comment. It would be nice to know what the size of the other one was, and it was the sixteen by twenty, just to make sure it is going, that they're not trying to build something bigger.
I don't know that anybody knows that. We also took a look at the Google Earth photos, as Brian has mentioned, and when you take a look at them as far back as we can go, photos of this area, the deck's not there.
Did anybody pull, just pull a tape measure out from the foundation to, to the last row of footings, where the pails are? I mean, did anybody just, just out of curiosity?
I'm sure he did.
Nobody shot an elevation or a locational point on it?
We actually located the house with survey, and we didn't actually shoot in the actual supports.
I mean, that would have been, that would have answered the question.
That would have been sort of a no-brainer. If you take a look at that spatially, it looks like.
It doesn't look, yeah, it looks reasonable. It looks reasonable, given the dimensions that, that are being proposed, but it would have been sort of proof in the pudding if that had been.
Point taken. Thank you.
The, that addition off the right side there, looks like a little sunroom or something like that?
Yes.
Is that on the roadside?
It is. It actually extended.
So that's, that's out there a lot further than this deck is going to be.
You can see that on the plan.
You can see that on the plan.
Yeah. All the more reason that.
Mr. Fisher's from the board. Will we open up to the public? Will the public like to speak on this? See now, I'll close the public part of this meeting. We'll come back to the board for questions. Okay. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions in the neighborhood?
It is. Paraphrasing, the lot has two fronts. We're actually going off to the side of the house, so the unique character of the property is that the house was built very close to what was at that, as you mentioned, probably a smaller road without a right-of-way at the time. Right-of-way was created afterward. Unique circumstances that the house is tucked close to the corner of the property near Two Streets.
And the grain of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use of the fair market value of abiding properties?
That is correct, and that's one of the reasons we passed out the aerial photo that you've got, to show you that the houses in that area are fairly spread apart, or well spread apart, so literally, nobody's even going to see this. I mean, it's a small photo before you, but you can see that some of those houses have things like fairly substantial decks and pools and what have you. So this actually brings this house, which has had sort of a detrimental effect up until now, more into compliance with the properties that are in the neighborhood.
And the practical difficulty is not a result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner. That's why I asked whether or not those, any of those have been put in, in the last six, four or five years.
According to the client, they were there when he was small, and he's not so small anymore, when his parents, his grandparents had it. So it's probably sometime back in the seventies.
And no other, wait, let me remember my line here. And no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except the variance?
That's correct. Just given the orientation of the building, again, what you see on the left side of the back of the house, that's the kitchen area, that is completely plumbed, and it's got the, the gas situation there. So if we were to try to put a deck elsewhere, just for having a deck, it certainly wouldn't be able to go there. The point being is that any deck that might go up there fairly easily would end up going behind the garage, which would then not be accessible from the house. So this is really the only practical alternative to be able to rebuild that deck, plus the doors, the access doors are already there.
And the grain of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties. That's a little bit tricky.
Again, nobody's really going to see, well, you could see this, but it's not like there's a house directly across the street. Again, that's why we wanted to show you the aerial photograph. And the houses that are in the area, they're nice houses, to be sure, and some of them are equally the size of this one, which isn't huge, but it's not really small. Many of them are considerably larger with pertinent structures such as pools and considerable decks of their own right. So it would tend to result more nearly in conformance with a lot of the other properties that are in that area.
And the grain of variance will not have an unreasonable adverse effect on the natural environment?
It will not. It's a mowed lawn at this point, and the deck support structures are already there, so they don't, they may have to enhance them a little bit, but they won't be expanding them.
And that's on the hills, so you're not in the flood zone there, right?
That's correct.
And the dimensional standards, just, so we, if, if we're to ask a case of a strict application of dimensional standards ordinance to the property for which the variance is sought, would both preclude the use of the property which is permitted in the zone, which is located, and also would result in significant economic injury to the applicant?
That's always a challenge, a little bit. Obviously, the house is still there, they can certainly use it, but when you do take a look at it, this isn't something that somebody said, hey, gee, I'd like to puncture a hole in my wall and put out a deck. It's already set up for that. So they're, while not absolutely detrimental, when somebody were to take, if you were to sell it on the market, and somebody were coming to try to buy it, the first thing they'd probably do is look out those door windows or walk around the back and say, where's the deck?
It's functionally obsolescent, functionally obsolete, certainly.
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
Mr. Green? Yes, sir. I can kind of address that on another aspect. If they were to sell it or anything, they wouldn't even be able to get insurance on it, because no insurance carrier would cover that with doors opening up to the ground where someone can fall.
Thank you. Okay, so we've been through these. I'd like to take each one separately, but I think we can go fairly quickly through these. So the need of variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions in the neighborhood. Anybody have any discussions on that? To me, it's pretty obvious. It's just time. And so I have no, no problem with that. Number one, all in favor? Unanimous. Number two, the grain of variance will not result, not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use of the fair market value of abiding properties.
I would comment that it produces a desirable change to the property.
I agree with you.
Probably the neighbors would like to see the bucket's gone.
Again, desirable.
Good point. So all in favor of number two being met? That's unanimous. Practical difficulty is not a result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner. Technically, I guess you could argue that not taking care of it twenty-five years ago would in, would create, would have created this situation, but I think this is common sense that has to apply there. So it's not as if, nobody does that if they can't afford to do it and repair it and keep care of it. So obviously, they just either couldn't physically or financially do anything. I'm not going to hold that against them for twenty-five years ago. So that's my position on the, on that one. I don't know if anybody else has any opinion on it?
Yeah, there was, I had some of the questions on that, because technically, it was an action taken by the prior owner.
Was it a non-action action?
Well, yeah. Well, they took it down, too.
Do you want to add anything to that?
No, I'm fine with that.
Any discussions on that? So, number three, all in favor? That's unanimous. Number four, no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except the variance?
I think it's been demonstrated that there is no reasonable feasible, reasonable feasible alternative. As you pointed out, you can't, you can't move the doors and the areas of the house that you would shift the deck down to would, wouldn't work.
Normally, I would say no on this, but, I mean, knowing what I know about the house and those doors, I mean, they need to put something there. It does need to happen.
I agree. All in favor? That's unanimous. The grain of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties. I think you said something about that. Discussion on that? I think it, I think it does, it makes, it's consistent with any home in Scarborough that I know, most have decks or some kind of a backyard. They'll probably have to get, I just don't, I, it's only going to help the property, and it'll also protect any wood rot that may have already been there, whatever, it'll, it'll help that issue, so I have no problem.
Getting the bucket down to win this.
Yeah, the grain of variance will have, have, will not have an, sorry, unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment?
I don't see anything here.
It doesn't seem like there's any issue that would be tied to that. All in favor? Unanimous. Property is not located, we know that's not in the flood zone, it wouldn't be here. And again, the case for strict application of dimensional property, I think there would be substantial hardship if you were to sell this. It would, if you're competing against other houses, that house would lose. And so I think that's enough of a reason, in my opinion. And I think your comments.
Well, it's actually, they wouldn't be able to get insurance on it, if anybody inspected it.
All in favor? That's unanimous. So I'd have a motion for the approval, for appeal number?
Move to, move to appeal, move to approve, appeal number twenty-five ninety-nine?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. None in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, last appeal.
Sure.
This may be a one knock, Mark, you know?
Someone's already wrote it, hasn't they?
Okay, you can say your name, relationship with the project, and we'll go from there.
Sure. My name is Mark Carpenter. I'm a professional land surveyor with Netto Land Surveying.
Could you say your last name first, please?
Carpenter. Mark Carpenter. With Netto Land Surveying and representing Robin and Jeff Marsanskis. Jeff is here tonight. They're the applicant.
Okay.
They came, we were, became involved with this project during a, sort of a routine mortgage loan inspection for a refinance on the property. During the inspection, it disclosed apparent encroachments of the Abutter's garage. This was, obviously, the properties, both properties are of an age that this predates the zoning, and no building, building permits were found in the file. We're here before you for practical difficulty in regards to the space and bulk requirement of minimum lot size. Currently, both properties are, do not meet, are legal non-conforming in regards to lot size. They're both under the minimum requirement. The applicant and the neighbor are both involved as, as far as trying to relocate the, the common boundary here to free up the encroachment. And relocating the boundary here would, would meet the side, side yard setback of the zone. We're not reducing the frontage of the, of the applicant's front yard, less than the one, the minimum, and this would actually bring the, the Abutter's front yard into more conformance. And by adjusting those side lot line, we're going to free both the garage and the driveway. Brought a photo here that wasn't included in the package, but helps sort of demonstrate that not only the aerial view, which you could have, but the front yard is sort of a street view. Helps sort of show. Here's the garage, property line, or you shift the property line over fifteen feet off the, off the edge of the garage, fifteen feet required. Apparently, the dior is being occupied and the same location is being proposed, and the variance is for those, for the lots up.
Okay. I'm sure you've got some comments.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, I'd like to say it's uncommon, but it's not really that uncommon. There are a lot of cases where, once the mortgage loan inspections are done, structures on the property appear to be in places that people didn't expect them to be, and property lines are different. And this was an attempt. Mark and his firm came to me and wanted to know if the town would approve such a boundary line change in order to clear up any title, clouds on the title for, for conveyance of, of the, the Marsanskis property. And so in consulting with the town's attorney, the point was raised that our ordinance doesn't expressly prohibit the creation of a non-conforming lot. It simply prohibits us from issuing a building permit on a non-conforming lot. If somebody, somebody was today to create a non-conforming lot by conveyance. So where these lots were both non-conforming to begin with, the Abutter's lot more non-conforming than the Marsanskis lot, I didn't feel like the town really, you know, from my perspective, I didn't see that it was really doing any harm to improve, again, to kind of correct that trespass issue and clear the title. But the odd thing is that you, in doing so, you forfeit your grandfathered non-conforming, existing non-conforming lot status. In other words, any non-conforming lot of record can be built upon as long as they meet the setback or. they meet the setback requirements and so on and so forth. They, they forfeit that lot of record status, um, by changing that lot line. So, in effect, what the applicant is coming to the board for is, is to grant that relief, uh, to them to sort of increase the non-conformity of their lot, but then it, it preserves their ability to get a building permit for, for their house. If they wanted to do an addition, or a, a deck, or something on, as long as that met setbacks, they could do that. So, it kind of reestablishes the legality of their lot.
Let me just, if I can.
Sure.
So, these are, these are the people's read, uh, it's the property owner, at least at this point?
This is the applicant.
This is the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, so, the property is, they're sharing it? Is this being pushed over this way, or?
So, so if you look at the, if you look at your, everybody got their plan, the, the, the survey plan in front of them. I've got it up on the big screen. I, I don't know if you, I'm not gonna try to get my pen out. So, so the property on the left is the Marsanskus property. The property on the right is the abutter. Currently, the Marsanskus boundary line goes through the abutters' garage. Okay? Does everybody see that? So, what Mark's, uh, firm is proposing is to, uh, create a new boundary line that is, that places the abutters' garage totally on their property, and also meets the 15-foot side setback. In doing so, they're reducing the area of the Marsanskus property. That's the only non-conformance that they're actually increasing. The, um, it already meets street frontage requirements, um, and I think that the, uh, building is, is conforming with, within its location. So, so they're reducing already non-conforming area by a little bit, still maintaining, um, the minimum, um, road frontage and a little bit more. And they're increasing the conformity of the other lot, which is also non-conforming, by adding a little bit more to their frontage, and taking care of the trespass, and meeting the side setback.
Now, does, this property here, the one on the right, do they lose any rights by this event happening, when you mentioned that?
No, because they're already non-conforming, and it's actually increasing, it's increasing their conformance. It's, it's decreasing their conformance, and that's why that would, that would...
So, that's why we don't need them here?
Yeah, no.
Okay, so, we, they are uninjured by this?
They're helped by this tremendously.
God, should be a, come on, I'm covering.
I mean, any way, any way you slice it, they're helped by this.
Which would be a tax. Uh, okay, and then this one over here is, uh, this will lose its ability to come back to the board for any non-conformity issue?
Without approval of a practi, they, so, so here's the deal. They could create this new bu, boundary line, and the conveyance could happen without any board action, but they would lose their grandfathered status.
Because they're coming here to their own, so they...
That's right.
Thank you. I know, Ben. That, that makes sense. Does everybody understand that? Did everybody understand it before I did? So, okay, I get it. Makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, we haven't had one of these in, I don't know if we've had one of these since I've been here, but, um, so it's a little different.
Okay, so why don't we run through the requirements of, um, so the new variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood? If you just state on record what the situation is?
Uh, yes, the variance is due to the unique encroachment, which has persisted for many years, and is not the general condition in the neighborhood.
And the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or the fair market value of abutting properties?
No, granting the variance will bring the common boundary closer to the current line of occupation, and will eliminate the encumbrance affecting both the use and fair market value of both properties.
And the practical, practical difficulty is not a result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner?
No, the practical difficulty is a result of the parcels lot area which was created prior to the current zoning district's minimum lot area requirement.
And the, no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except the variance?
No, the applicant and the abutter are in agreement to relocate the bound, yeah, or in agreement to relocate the boundary line.
And the granting of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties. That's what we're hearing.
Yes, granting the variance will bring the common boundary closer to the occupation.
And the granting of the variance will not have an adverse, an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment?
Uh, no, granting the variance will not change the envi, the natural environment, and will prevent disturbance created by relocating the improvement.
And not in Sherland's zone?
No.
And then the last one, does it hurt the value of properties? I mean, it's obvious that it could increase. So, it, it's interesting. It doesn't hurt the value of this property. It hurts the value of the other properties. I mean, it helps you to that property.
Well, it helps both, both properties, because the conveyance would be made very difficult as far as title on the, on the property with that trespass issue still there. So, that's, that's kind of the feasible, or, excuse me, that's kind of the practical difficulty, uh, as far as the financial piece of it.
Uh, let me open up to the public. Anybody wish to speak on this? Got any letters?
Mr. Longstaff got an email from David Reed, and he says, "I am the abutter to appeal number 2600. That is to be heard on March 8, 2017. I will be out of town on this date. Do I need to be present if I am in favor of the appeal?" Do you want me to read Mr. Longstaff's response? I mean, he, he didn't send any additional information.
He never sent any additional comments, but he, he stated he was in favor of it. He only wanted to know if he had to be here in order to state that. And I told him he could send his comments in writing. We didn't receive any, but that's the correspondence.
I would say, I would say that letter affirms his position. Anybody have, anybody question that?
So, essentially, they're really giving away land. This money won't amount to that.
Not giving away.
We don't know that.
Fixing the problem, you know?
Okay, so...
How did, how did this problem happen?
I, I didn't get into it, but the properties, both properties were, like, the first one was sold in 56, and the second one, uh, two after, uh, came out of a common, common owner. It was actually purchased by a, by a family, common, it was owned by two brothers, and it was owned by that family all the way up until, uh, March 57, their property, I mean, this, uh, certain, approach like this on a common boundary line between the families.
So, the house on the right was built prior to any zoning in the town of Scarborough?
Uh, correct. I couldn't find, I couldn't find any building permit information for either property in 1957. Tax card, uh, had both properties in progress.
We're guessing both, both dwellings were built before zoning.
Which would have been 78?
No, zoning was in place in 59.
So, Mr. Longstaff, I just have a quick question. Maybe I'm just, like, not understanding. If we were to approve this, would that prohibit them from coming back before us if they needed to get anything done because they're giving up that grandfathered, or?
No. If you were to approve it, it would allow them to get a building permit for anything that they could meet setbacks for.
Okay, so just re-justify the grant?
It, it just, yeah, it just gives them a conforming, a legally, a legally existing non-conforming lot, again, which is what they have now.
They don't have to come here in order to do it.
They don't have, they don't have to come here, because the ordinance does not prohibit them from creating a non-conforming lot. Right now, they're an existing legally non-conforming lot. By changing that line, they forfeit that status. They're trying, they're here to reestablish that status, to get the blessing, if you will, of the board, in order to change that line, and not mess up their ability to get a permit for something else down the road.
Has this legally been done already?
No, it's waiting in the board.
All right, uh, reading the, uh, requirements here. So, I don't know, you're standing, I wanna do one. What'd you do with your page? All right, so I'm just gonna read one through, um, seven, and we'll continue from there. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood. I would say, it's certainly unique. Um, I have no problem with that. Anybody all in favor of one being met? Two, the granting of variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use of the fair market value of abutting properties. In fact, it just does the opposite, and you're not gonna notice it one way or the other. So, all in favor of two being met? Three, the practical difficulty is not a result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner?
Yep. Question on this. Where it was owned by a family and two brothers, do we consider that to be an application of the prior owner? Where the, technically, the garage is not the owner that's requesting it now, or?
I think our argument, or our position is that this was probably built before 1957.
Yeah, I think you could reasonably say that, that although, obviously, somebody took action and built both structures, and then later created a, a boundary line, I'm assuming unknowingly, they thought it was, you know, it was putting each house on its own lot. I, I don't think they intentionally created this problem. That's, that's how I would look at that. It wasn't an intentional action to create this problem. It was an accident. Accidents happen, unfortunately, more often than we'd like, and so that's, I think that's the situation. So, I think that one, you could say, yeah, obviously, there was action taken, but it wasn't an intentional action, like, you know, they intentionally conveyed a boundary line going through the car garage. I don't think anybody would knowingly do that. Thank you. Hopefully, they had better surveyors now than they did then.
Any discussion on this? None? All in favor? Genanous, thank you. And the granting of variance, uh, will bring the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties. Uh, the applicant's property, no, the...
You skipped the feasible alternative.
Oh, no, the feasible alternative is available to the applicant except the variance. That would be an obvious...
I can, I can add to that, if, if the chair pleases. Um, according to the town's attorney, the only other, um, way to resolve this issue would have been possibly a non-action letter, which we, we've talked about and heard before. Some title companies will accept it, some title companies won't. Um, much more acceptable, almost universally acceptable, would be a variance, and that's why they've chosen this path. Um, so, from a feasible alternative, they've chosen the, the more feasible alternative. Uh, it's not the only alternative, but I think it's the more feasible alternative in order to correct, once and for all, correct this problem.
And you own the property currently? Uh, you ought to check with your title company, because they probably have liability on that. If you want to extend, it's, it's just a comment, just a side comment. When you get title insurance, title insurance protects you against exactly things like this. Somebody just wanna check on your policy.
Sir, can we just have you take the mic?
If you wanna take the mic, you can. I was just a, a snippet of a statement, just a...
Okay, and, um, let's see, where were we? Uh, the granting of variance will bring, uh, all in favor for, and no other feasible alternative is available? That's unanimous. Thank you. The, uh, granting of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties. And I think, you know, I'll agree with that.
You get more in conformance.
All in favor? Is that unanimous? The granting of the variance will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment. It's not gonna be any adverse effect. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Uh, it's not in the flood zone, it wouldn't be here. And, uh, it could do harm. So, that's three. All in favor of numbers seven and eight? Genanous. So, we have a motion for approval of, which one is this one?
Moved to approve, appeal number 2600.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. None? All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
The less lawn you have to mow.
I never even thought about it. I guess I have nothing. I didn't have a chance to think about any comments for tonight. Do you have any, any care on it?
No.
The only thing I have is, again, I would request that people call the sanitary district, that anybody that wanted a in-law apartment, or a accessory unit, sorry, and didn't get one, even though they were approved, or wants one in the future, should call the, the, uh, sanitary district and challenge them on the fact that they had double charging on that, charging $3,000 for that fee. I wrote that ordinance. It was not the intent. The intent was to make life easier for people, and there's no accountability. So, please call and complain, because it's $3,000 to add a room, so that your family can stay in the house, or you can keep your home. And the reason why they come here, pay the fee, to get the approval, now that they don't have to do that, is because they, they needed that freedom to be able to do that. I have heard that most of the appeals we've gone through over the years, since that ordinance was put in place in 2000, about 17 years, have not been done because of the $3,000 fee that they charged. And then, then on top of that, charge another $50 fee per month, considering it a two-unit. It's not a two-unit. So, that's my, uh, my gripe. It'll be a continuous gripe, uh, till we change the rules. Yeah, any discussion or motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Make a phone call.